The, you know, the propositions we go through before we get started.
Okay, we're, we're started. It takes a little bit for the attendees to populate. All right, I'm going to call us to order and start our roll call and we should have a full board by the end of it. So calling to order the meeting of Friday, March 26th, 12:31, can we have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Corso Clark.
Here.
Student trustee Mala.
Here.
Trustee Boyd. Trustee Davidson.
Here.
Trustee Duran. Don't see her yet. There she is. Trustee Duran. Okay, Vice President Dos.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Here.
And Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
Can we have our reading of the mission statement and meeting norms?
Yes, the mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms are to maintain a focus on what is best for students, to ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully, to endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students, and to make a commitment to effective deliberation. Each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view, even if one disagrees.
Thank you. There was no, excuse me, action taken in closed session. We need a motion to approve our agenda today, which is just one review and action item.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Sorry. Student trustee Corso Clark.
Yes.
Student trustee Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Duran.
Yes.
Vice President Dos.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. The agenda is approved unanimously and we move to our review and action item. Five dash one amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Albany Teachers Association and Albany Unified School District regarding hybrid instruction. I will turn this over to Superintendent Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Hinckley, as you know, we went into negotiations with our labor partners, our teachers, to come to an agreement with a tentative agreement as it stood at the time of preparing the agenda. Since then, it was continued upon the Albany Teacher Association, AKA ATA, ratifying the agreement with their members and then the board accepting or not accepting the agreement. It's been called to my attention that ATA recently ratified and now it's the board's turn to accept the agreement as presented and P A'd. And so I'm making that recommendation to you, Madam Chair, President Hinckley, that we do that at this time.
And could you or or one of the staff just review the components of the amendment? Just for the public record?
Sure, we're going to ask that it be brought up. So you have here visibly before you and to the viewing audience, the three main areas of parties agree to the following. Class size cohort size is presented. You see first bullet, 24 maximum in PK five. The good news there, that was the maximum, but after checking this morning, we're below those maximum in our grades, which gives us a great sense of pride. Second bullet, class size cohorts of no more than 18 students in grade six to eight. Choir, band, and PE will teach outdoors with up to 24 students in each class. And then the final bullet there in section one is the district will make every effort to keep class size cohort size below 24, and we did that and we are very pleased with being able to keep those numbers low. Somewhere sometimes in 19 to 21, and so we pleased with that. Section two, physical distancing. As you know, when we first started to negotiate this, we were being very prudent about keeping everybody safe. Fast forward, as we mentioned, we're more updated, although the new guidelines talk about three feet. We wanted to keep four feet, especially if we were going to consider 24, because we wanted to be cautious. So we went from six to 24, but from six to four. And then the third section cohorts per day. First bullet reads members would meet with no more than one cohort per classroom teachers in grade PK five. And that's basically at our elementary schools, as you know, there is a self-contained classrooms, but in our secondary groups, we would need to have multiple cohorts in order to have in-person learning. And so we have second bullet, members will meet with no more than four cohorts per day in grades six to eight. And then number four, elementary ELD reading intervention. Bargaining unit members will have the option to provide in-person testing and/or hubs. The scheduling will be provided to each site administered by each elementary ELD reading intervention bargaining unit members. Elementary ELD reading intervention bargaining unit members cannot be directed to provide in-person testing and/or hubs. And this was language that was old language when it was in a dark place, but it still was applicable to today considering our schedule and it still works for, most importantly, our kids, our staff, and the district. And then in another area, we have unit members must engage in extensive and unique preparation in order to transition between educational platforms. By way of illustration and non-limitation, this include recreation of lesson plans and educational environments consistent with technology-based learning. So in this area, our first section reads as follows. And I'm not going to read all the sections. I'm going to take a moment, let the public read it. Oh, well, it's the last section, so I might as well keep going on, right? With the above proposal modification, this agreement is in compliance with AB 86 and the district will provide a one-time payment of $2,500 to each bargaining unit member. And let me pause here. So how did money get associated with this? This is the going practice up and down the state. And because of the, we believe the additional hours that are outside of the contract that teachers are putting in, this is only a fraction of what could be, one can can say that would be generated with all the extra hours they're putting in. So that was some of the thinking. But reading forward, $2,500 to each bargaining unit member, including ACC members who provides in-person or distance learning instruction as the district is prepared to welcome back students in grades TK five on March 29th, that means this Monday, 2021, and grade six, eight on April 5th, 2021, pursuant to the student schedules adopted by the board on March 16th, 2021. Bargaining unit members will receive the one-time amount as a lump sum no later than April 30th, 2021. And then we have a notation here. And I'm going to let you read that for yourself. And that's the tentative agreement on behalf of Albany Unified School District and ATA.
Great, thank you. Board, any clarifying questions and then we can take statements after that, but I want to make sure that there, we get any questions out of the way. All right, I see none. We do have one public comment. Are there any comments board members want to make before we go to public comment? Otherwise, we'll come back for both a motion or discussion. Okay, I'm going to start with Adrienne.
Hi, board members and Dr. Wells and school administrators. I, I realize that this has been an incredible feat that you had to do with bringing back schools in different places. I wanted to comment today because I've just learned and I'm thrilled to hear that you're going to keep class sizes low and all of that. But I'm coming to you today because I've also learned that Ms. Lastime is now going to be transferred to Ocean View away from her critical responsibilities at Albany High School. I was stunned to hear this news because as, as you've said in other board meetings, we have the ability to hire people at the school to support this effort. And the other reason that I'm stunned to hear this is because this educator and administrator has meant so much to the students and the students need her. Ms. Lastime is seen as a trusted adult by so many students who just like to talk with her. It was tragic that she was taken away from the ethnic studies program, but she was at least still in the community. While I realize that the senior class, which now has her as their advisor, is not the future of AUSD's. Their school year isn't over yet. I cannot believe that AUSD would take away one more thing from this senior class. For those students who are going to return on campus, they would be thrilled to see her chat about sports or whatever is happening in their lives. She has a special connection with these students. It's more than, for those who are being remote, they knowing that they can call on her for help is so important. Please don't underestimate her importance to the students in these last months of their AUSD education. It's more than disappointing that this is even a consideration, as I know that aside from what I've mentioned here, she is working on a number of critical projects for the future of the high school students. Please don't let the loud voices of elementary school parents drown out what is just as important for those in the upper grades. We are counting on you to be the voice of reason on these issues and do what your expertise tells you is the right thing to do for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel.
Hi, everyone. This is Rachel Anderson, reporting live from the Ocean View Annex. And I wanted to just bring to the attention of the board and our community members what these decisions are actually looking like on the ground. Our teachers are here, working themselves absolutely to the brink in order to get the sites ready for students on Monday. We have teachers, when I heard that class sizes are limited to 24 or in many places are less than, that's not the experience that I'm hearing about here at Ocean View, where quite a few of our specialists, ELD and reading supports are now working as classroom teachers so that individuals can, from other sites like Cornell, their students will be absorbed into Ocean View specialists classrooms for remote teaching. Trustee Dos, your child here at Ocean View is going to be one of the lucky few who has a class of 15. Everyone else is going to be in classes of 24. And I just want to be sure that the trickle-down effect of these decisions for our teachers is being reckoned with so that we can be really sure that we're all being grateful and thankful to these teachers for what they're giving to our communities. And if you have time or availability to reach out to your teachers or administrators, that you're taking a moment to ask what you can do to help support this reopening plan. And in particular, board members who have voted for it, I'd love to see you guys down here helping to move tables and chairs and set classrooms up. Thanks so much.
I'm going to interject and ask that the audience be respectful of people, kids, and keep kids as sacred and out of this arena because that's not okay. And so I'm deeply disturbed about that, but moving forward, I'm asking the audience and all of staff and non-staff to respect both children because it's important to do that. And so please do not refer to people, children in this context. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eva.
Hi, I have a question about spring break. And if there's been any consideration given that people will be traveling over spring break and that most schools have a remote only week after spring break. And if that is something that could be considered. I also have a few more specific questions. If students will stay with their teachers now? And if the, if students stayed fully remote, will they follow the in-person Zoom? Or will they have a separate teacher that will only teach the remote students? And last, what does, what do the periods stand for? For example, what if you don't have period one? I also want to say that I'm concerned about the comment that I just heard from the teachers and hope that they will be taken to heart. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I will, I will come back to some of these questions when we're done. And Andrea.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm a parent of an eighth grader and a 10th grader, and I think there are some consistent threads that you're hearing already with the previous speakers. And now that the board is making a decision on the principle of equality, such as opening the schools in person to all who want it, with a critical focus on some equity-based elements, like maintaining resource specialists at the elementary and using equity-based pedagogies for online students at AMS. I really want to urge you to take an equity-based lens around implementation with a key eye on unintended consequences. And I'll give you some examples about what I'm hearing in our community. I also want to urge you to be more transparent. And so what I'm asking is that you select equity-based metrics. You make them transparent to the community and then you hold yourselves accountable publicly against those metrics. And that means asking hard questions. So here are some questions I suggest you ask. Why is the district on Monday reassigning part of the time of the assistant principal, who's the touch point at the high school for seniors, IEPs, 504s, ethnic studies, restorative justice, among other student services, and spending part of that person's time at Ocean View? Could you act on that today to save those equity-based supports at AHS during a time of turmoil for our students? Why is the high school possibly laying off a school psychologist at the high school in the midst of a mental health crisis? Do students who are designated as learning English and their families have the supports they need to navigate this time? Which families chose virtual versus in-person by race and language spoken at home and which families did not fill out the survey? Please disaggregate your data publicly and ask these questions and answer them publicly. If you need resources about how to select equity-based metrics, I'm happy to share some with you. I've got a ton of books around me right now. And I just really want you to learn from the teachers because as you can hear, they know what's happening when they implement this and there are some consequences that are really worrisome for an equity, from an equity-based lens. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel.
Madam, Madam Chair, President Hinckley, I think we have one agenda item. Are these comments that are, are these, are these comments that are not on agenda or comments on an item that's on agenda? I just wanted to get a point of clarification.
These are on the MOU and the reopening.
Thank you for that.
And we have three more. Go ahead, Rachel.
Hi, my name's Rachel Cohen. I'm a parent of a sixth grader and a third grader. We're really excited about reopening, so thank you. I know everyone is working hard on this and we appreciate that. I just had a quick question and suggestion on one of the items in the MOU, which was about band and choir being out of doors. We really value music at our school. My sixth grader is in band and loves it, but I think it is just not safe to have band out of doors. I think band and choir should stay remote. CDC guidelines still say that outdoor gatherings should be masked. And just this morning on NPR, we heard a whole story about even professional singers are not performing outside without their masks. So I feel like although we're excited about remote, we would have to pull our daughter out of her beloved band class if this happens because it's just against all the guidelines we have and we got to use the guidelines we have, right? So just offering that suggestion and request in a respectful way. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you.
If I could respond to that, I can't speak to band personally, but I know that in choir of the in-person meetings we've had, we've sung and everyone has kept their masks on the entire time and it's worked out fine and we haven't had any transmission because of, because of those meetings. So choir meetings have been taking place outside throughout the year and it has been safe. People have been properly social distancing environments during those meetings.
Thanks. Rebecca. You might be.
Sorry about that. Yeah. Thank you very much, President Hinckley, board members. Congratulations on reaching this point. I know, you know, everybody's not happy. I'm still not sure what I'm going to do with my middle schooler who's very apprehensive about being in contact with, you know, what is it, about 45 students a day. But what I wanted to just say now is I would love to see you guys discussing whether or not you can bring in some kind of random COVID testing for both students and teachers and other staff on site. There is, you know, substantial amount of money that's been provided from the federal government, from the state government. I saw the latest estimate on EdSource is that we'd be getting about $1.36 million, which, you know, would be more than enough to do some kind of random testing. And I, I'm sure you've heard in the news about significant outbreaks at Michigan schools. You know, I'm hopeful that we don't have anything like that, but I think having regular testing would just give people some sense of comfort and also be really helpful for containing any outbreaks. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Megan.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my call. First time talker, longtime listener. I have a sixth grader at AMS and I was, wanted to ask a question about the opt-in, the May opt-in time. Because like somebody said before, with spring break and people traveling and the several cohorts and my son already being in a sports cohort in addition, it's kind of nerve-wracking and we are all a little concerned, but I wanted to know about the May opt-in time. If that was still an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi all.
Hi, thanks for taking my question. I'm an Ocean View and High School parent. And I just want to say at this moment to the board that the events of the past month are really a lesson in how not to make decisions and transitions that affect thousands of children, children and families. The decisions and reversals of the last two weeks have eroded trust and created wounds in this community that I don't know we will ever heal from or will certainly take a very long time. So I want to send out appreciation to the teachers and administrators for graciously navigating this incredibly difficult moment. I hope the board will be more inclusive and deliberative in its decisions moving forward. And like a previous speaker, I'm also very concerned about the inequities that have been the collateral damage of this, this, this process, this hasty process. And to make sure that the ELD families are particularly prioritized as we move forward. And I'm anxious to know about the decision that's made about the second opt-in period. Thank you.
Thank you. There was another hand, but it disappeared. All right. Here it is. Dana.
Hi, this is Dana. I'm a mom of a seventh grader and fifth grader and I had a question about band and choir related to the previous question. So the way I understand the plan is that if you are remote, which my kids will be, I don't feel safe with the options that have come up. And they don't feel safe either. But my child is a choir singer and if they are only on-site, whether that's safe or not, my understanding is that my, my son will have to quit choir in the last 10 weeks of school, my seventh grader. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I understand. And another mom on here came on and asked about whether or not that could continue remote. Again, my, I don't know if it's safe or not. I'm not a scientist, but it would be at least fair if it continued remote because then everybody, including the remote kids, could continue. I don't think it's, it's equitable for my child to lose it if that's in fact what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is the same Rachel that spoke before. Go ahead, Rachel.
Hi, apologies. It is the same Rachel. I'll be very quick. I'm so glad that the choir works well with masks. That's fabulous. But band, of course, won't because it involves blowing into instruments, so. And trumpets and other instruments like that, it aerosolizes droplets. It is really truly not safe. Please reconsider the band and thank you.
Thank you. Diego.
Hi, my name is Valeria and I'm a Cornell mom. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the immense amount of emotional and physical labor that has been placed on the teachers and the administrators during this time. And last night I heard that some of the classrooms don't even have desks in their rooms yet. And so I just recognize that they're going through a lot and this is a very stressful time while they're navigating decisions about their own families. Continuing to navigate a pandemic. And so, you know, just want to take a moment to really appreciate them and express my concern for how this process has been handled over the past month. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, board, we have an action item before us and we can also have discussion before that. And so all of the questions that came up in the public comment are really about implementation of the plan. So at the end of our meeting, I will run a list through those so that we can be clear that those answers are communicated out or that those are flagged for future board discussions.
Madam Chair, before we do, I just want to make a note for the public and to the board that I took great umbrage with any adult coming before a body or in public, calling out any innocent child was deeply troubling, but I want the board to know and the community to know that the person who referenced one of our, our board member children this morning was not an employee of Albany Unified School District. And I think that's important to note.
Thank you. Board, any discussion before we take a motion? Yeah, trustee Boyd.
I thank you, President Hinckley. I just want to be clear that we are not supposed to respond or discuss any of, any of the questions that were asked. That's all. As you determined about implementation, so it doesn't affect actually approving the plan. And those are things that would be discussed potentially as far as direction on implementing that, right?
Right. Any other board discussion or emotion?
I move that we approve the plan. I move that we approve this agenda item.
I second that.
Hey, student trustee Corso Clark.
Yes.
Student trustee Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Duran.
Yes.
Vice, excuse me, Vice President Dos.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
And trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the motion to approve the amendment to the MOU with Albany Teachers Association passes. with Albany Teachers Association passes unanimously with our student board members. And that is our only action item. I do just want to offer board members a chance to make a statement if they want about the MOU or the reopening, since we listened to comments and the board hasn't had a chance to also make statements. Yeah, trustee Duran.
I think what we heard from someone today was beyond the pale because once again, as the superintendent clearly highlighted, it's about our children. And there's been enough back and forth amongst the adults. And, you know, it's been a sad process in that respect, especially once again because our student trustees have seen it and heard it and probably have received some of the letters as well. And it's been tough because it's not that one side is right and the other side is wrong. It's perceptions and where people stand. And obviously, because this, our decision and all that's in the past has been because of our kids. And our kids are, you know, the most precious, of course, to us. And so we are going to take a stand and fight for them. But once again, and so there's been, you know, this back and forth. And I thought trustee Boyd spoke to it elegantly and eloquently the other night, that we have to, you know, work together. And I think the board has indicated that time and time again, although when we vote and have our actions to some people, in the community, it doesn't feel like that, right? It feels we're taking a side one way or the other. But I think going forward, I hope, you know, I think we all feel we've sort of met and this is the last hurdle and we just passed the last hurdle. So going forward, hopefully it's one of unity and one of where we can work collectively together, everybody together in this community. It's been a tough year and so hopefully it'll go better going forward.
Trustee Davidson.
Well, thank you, trustee Duran. That was beautifully said as well. That's sort of the same sentiment of my message. I just typed it up. I said, you know, we as a board, we were divided a little bit on how to make this happen, but we all agreed that we need to get our kids back in the classrooms and back in schools as much as possible, as soon as possible. However, the way we navigated some of that process left some stakeholders out. And as we move forward, we need to make practical yet strong decisions that include everyone in our district. When our teachers negotiated this particular MOU, they were negotiating for safety. They asked for these considerations because they take the gravity of what we are asking them to do seriously. We're asking them to keep our children safe while in their classrooms. We all want to see our children back learning with their peers and teachers. We all want to keep our kids safe. Please let us focus on these commonalities as we move forward and give a little time for this process to actually happen before we rush to a next step. I'll be working hard with our superintendent and our board to make sure we get a comprehensive plan ready for the fall so that we can involve all stakeholders in this upcoming process. I appreciate everyone who's given so much extra time to making this happen and that we're at this step. I think we've all learned a lot from the process. And I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and showing up and helping to get ready for schools to reopen and for all of us to be working together on this next step.
Vice President Dos?
Yeah, I was just, can somebody send me the recording of this at the conclusion of the meeting? I know that usually it's like posted within a couple of days, but if I could be sent the recording immediately following the meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. The only, the only other thing I'll say is I've been trying really, really hard to be as respectful as possible to everybody. I don't receive that same respect in return. I receive disrespect on Zoom and through those emails. But we're all getting vaccinated and kids are all going back in school. And these board meetings will then return to being in person. And we all will have to continue to like live in the community and life will go on. So what I would ask moving forward is that you save that disrespect for when we are meeting in person. Stop disrespecting me on this Zoom and stop disrespecting me through those emails and save it for when you see me at these board meetings or when you see me in the community. Stop disrespecting me online. And the next person that brings up my kid is going to be a serious issue. Nobody else is being professional, so I don't really have to be professional either. So let that be, let that be what it's going to be. Bring up my kid again, it's going to be a problem. I don't care what the context is. Because all of this, it is what it is. But at the end of the day, I am a parent first, before being a board member, before anything else. And I'm tired of everybody feeling like they could disrespect me. So that's going to stop today. And that's what it's going to be, that we're going to stop that right now. And don't feel like whatever this is, like it's cool because it's not. And I don't know what planet everybody, maybe I'm letting off the wrong impression where you could go ahead and disrespect me, but that's the wrong impression for you to have. And I don't care how anybody feels about this meeting and about what I'm saying right now. So you can save your emails on that too. I'm letting off the wrong impression. But I'm letting everybody know today, that's the wrong impression and that's not how you should take me, where you think you can disrespect me and it's cool because it ain't. Maybe I need everybody to know, so now you know that it ain't cool. I'm not going to forget it. I'm not going to forgive you. It ain't going to be cool. I'm tired of y'all disrespecting me. And today going to be the last day you do it. You understand what I'm talking about? I'm going. You can do whatever y'all want with this.
Trustee Boyd.
I wanted to say thank you to the teachers and administrators and staff who have dealt with a difficult situation in the very best way that they could and put their best foot forward in these negotiations in trying to reach an agreement that, even if it doesn't seem perfect to perhaps any individual in this district, is something that allows us to move forward. To thank them for pivoting and having to change plans, for showing kindness and enthusiasm and care to their students and getting their classrooms ready and becoming one thing for the first part of the year and trying to become something else now going forward. Contrary to some opinion, I do not believe that I am an administrator or a teacher. I am very aware of the fact that I'm not. I do not know all that goes into serving in that role. But I do know that it's extremely difficult and that it's extremely important. And so I'm appreciative of the work that's going in. So I want to say thank you for that. And thank you to the district leadership, who has also been at the table and working through weekends and long hours to try to provide everything that they possibly could so that we could try to get to a place, again, that's not perfect, but that helps us to try to move forward as a district in a way that gets us closer to what we're all hoping we can get to, where we can be back in the classroom, where all of us feel safe to be back in the classroom as school is intended to function. And I know we're not there yet, but I think we're making an important step to try to get there for those who can and are able to, to return in class. And I appreciate those efforts as well. And the last thing that I want to say is I think that during this time where we're not seeing each other face to face, it can encourage us to kind of forget that we're real people and to say things to each other that we wouldn't say if we were looking at each other face to face in 3D and remembering that we're real people with emotions and that we're having good days and bad days and living through this time in all the different things, the isolation and the gun violence and the racial violence and the misogynistic violence and just the hardship, the financial hardship, just every type of possible hardship, the danger, the risk, the fear. And I am going to give people the benefit of the doubt and assume that we're all trying to do the best that we can for our children and whether it's our children who live in the home with us, our students who we teach, et cetera. And I love living in this district and I am hopeful and believe that the scars that are here, that we are going to work on healing them and that we are going to really try to remember that we're all individual flawed individual people who are doing the best that we can. And I believe that of all of us. And I hope that we can all believe that and move forward together.
Thank you. And so I will echo many of those sentiments. I know, you know, the announcement that came out this week about this plan and agreement, which I think we're all happy to see get implemented over the next several weeks, said that, you know, we got here together. And I just want to acknowledge that a lot of people in our community don't feel that we got here together. They feel excluded. They feel like we're divided. And some of them have had painful weeks saying goodbye to their teachers or to their parents, I mean, to their teachers or their students. And that I think it's important to acknowledge that pain. You know, just like I think trustee Boyd articulated, the pain so many people have experienced of all kinds over the past year and that we can't move forward as a community until we acknowledge where we really are. That the process that got us here didn't, for me, reflect the kind of collaboration and transparency and deliberation that I committed to when I was running for this office. And it was not led by the educators that I think are best equipped to design plans that balance health and safety with everything that is so complicated about teaching students. You know, any plan requires trade-offs and it's going to leave some people disappointed. It's our job to make those hard decisions. But good governance also requires that we acknowledge those trade-offs and plan for them. And I think we're hearing about some of those trade-offs today and will continue to. And I just want to say as a board member, you know, for myself, I feel accountable for making decisions that set everyone up for success, our students, our teachers, our staff, instead of just relying and knowing that our teachers and principals will do whatever it takes to make this successful. I need to set them up to succeed. I also, I tell my kids to judge people not by what they say, but by what they do. And I just want to admit to showing in action that I want to hold myself accountable for repairing this trust that has, I think, been damaged among a lot of families and teachers, that we will make decisions with all of our students in mind, not just those in the majority. And especially over the next 10 weeks that we will follow through on our commitment to take an equity approach to making sure that this is a successful rest of the year for all of our kids. And lastly, I just will say, you know, our schools, everyone talks about how great our schools are, how much we love our schools. Our schools thrive when everyone in them, teachers, students, staff, principals, feel respected and supported. And I, you know, I can say as much as I want, but I just want to reiterate that I hope that 10 weeks or, you know, at the end of my term, that people can look back and I can feel good about having taken real action to get us back to that sense of mutual respect and support that does make our schools so great. Because we really can't do it unless we do it together. And I look forward to us all feeling, you know, in person and, you know, seeing our human sides and feeling like we really did accomplish this together. Because that's the only way it's going to work. So I just will echo the thanks to all the hard work that's going into this. And I really appreciate trustee Boyd's sentiments about a year of Zoom takes its toll on our ability to really be the full complexity of everyone before us. And I hope that we can hang on just a little bit longer until we can really get a chance to reconnect. So with that, I thank everyone for yet another board meeting. We have, so I will just run quickly through this list of follow-up so that the superintendent has it. So one was a question about whether we have an advisory or some message around spring break, as some schools are doing to encourage folks to be cautious or whether there are some additional directions for families about steps to take if they do travel over spring break. The second was a follow-up on the possibility of doing student testing. We are already doing staff surveillance testing. Another question about the future opt-in phase. And then lastly, the band and choir implementation question. So those are all, just wanted to flag those since folks brought them up. And a couple of other staffing issues, personnel assignment issues, which I also think the superintendent took note of. If there are any other future items or follow-up items related to this, board, please bring them up now, otherwise we are ready to adjourn. And so our next board meeting is March 30th. Next Tuesday is a special workshop where we will hear staff reports on mental health outcomes and student learning outcomes for the current year. And our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, April 6th. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.